Good evening, welcome to the twice monthly meeting of Westminster's mayor and council. Please note that our meetings, although open to the public here at City Hall, will continue to be available and streamed live on the city's Facebook page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. Now we begin as we do every meeting with the pledge of the flag, followed by a moment's silence. We'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As a courtesy to everyone, please take a moment to silence your cell phones or any other electronic devices you might have that might ring or beep or make some other sound during the meeting. We appreciate that, thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information package that the council will be using are available online on the city's website, and I believe there are some copies, hard copies here in front of the room for anybody who might need one. Please have a guest with us tonight, the state's attorney for Carol Kenny, Mr. Alan Culver. Mr. Culver, thank you for joining us. Nice to see you again.
Nice to be here, thank you.
Without objection, we're going to withdraw two items from the agenda this evening. A resolution concerning the mayor, we'd like the mayor to be here for that when we discuss it, and also the one item under bids. And first, we'll consider the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the meeting of the mayor and council on October 11th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dayhoff, and a second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have a nice habit, and the minutes are approved. We have two presentations tonight, double the fun. First, we're going to have our quarterly update on the Westminster Fiber Network project. And start us off with that, we have Vicky Slinkman up Ting Internet. Ms. Slinkman, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Otherwise known as Veronica.
Oh, awesome. Perfect, thank you so much. Well, thank you again for having me this evening. I am on the crest of my fifth month with Ting, and have thoroughly enjoyed my time and just getting to be out in the community, and have never worked in a position where I've heard so much positive feedback about a product or service, and that's really kudos to everyone who supports the network. So I'm excited to be here to share with you just some of the things that we've been up to out and about in the community, and share with you the growth on the Wi-Fi network. So first, you may have noticed just from the cover of the presentation, it looks a little bit different, and that is because Ting is undergoing a brand refresh. And I do just want to caution everybody, this isn't rebranding. Rebranding is when you drastically are changing the look, the feel, the message of the brand. This is not that, this is a refresh, and it's all good things that are driving it. So first, the color is a little bit different, and that's mainly because the previous brand blue that we had used was not as accessible as we would have liked, particularly for people with special needs who are coming to the website. So being able to update that color to have it be more accessible is really important for us. Also, you'll notice the kind of other big changes that we've really relied a lot on illustrations, and those are great, and they're cool, and they're fun, but they don't really talk about what Ting is. And so we've introduced a lot more photography, and then are using the illustrations kind of in support of that. And the other really fantastic thing, I don't know how many of you have been to Ting's website, but when you initially go to the site, the first page you see is for the mobile side of the house, and then you have to click over to Ting Internet. It's clunky, it's not a great experience, and it's part of the rebrand. In a few months, we're luckily going to be launching a dedicated domain just for Ting Internet. Also, we were able to introduce door-to-door sales to Westminster. And we have two dedicated reps on our street team, and they are highly trained, they're very knowledgeable, they are permitted, so they are legally allowed to be there. They're very respectful. If there is a sign that says "no soliciting," they don't solicit, and even if they're met with that verbally with a potential customer telling them, you know, they don't want to speak with them, then they will leave. But so far, they've been really successful, and what we're seeing is they're not cannibalizing current orders. Our current orders are where we want them to be, so everything that they're getting is kind of just bonus on top of that. So these are just examples of pieces that they can leave with the potential customer. So what that all works out to in terms of growth on our network... Excuse me, I'm getting over a cold. I'm not actively sick, it's on the tail end of medication, but my voice is cutting out a little bit. I don't want to scare anyone. We did see great growth over the past quarter and growth throughout all of our neighborhoods, including our outside-of-city-limits pilot, and I'll talk about that in just a second, because I know it looks a little bit different, the numbers than what it normally is. But we saw 3% growth over the quarter, and that is when you take into account cancellations. Cancellations remain relatively low typically when people are canceling. It's because they're moving, and then we are actively marketing to whomever is purchasing that home to hopefully, we call them win-backs, but to hopefully get them back into the family. And a funny anecdote I wanted to share, I got an email from deputy director of Public Works, John Dick, and he had been looking at some of the reporting, and he was like, "This looks really weird. There's one address that has a cancel and a new subscriber on the same day. What is that?" And I'm like, "Yeah, great catch." So I went and looked, and it was a homeowner who was moving, and so he had canceled. The person who was moving in, they timed it up so that there was no lapse in their service, so the new homeowner got Ting, and then even better, the original homeowner who was moving moved to a home that was within the network, and then he got Ting as well. So I was like, so excited that it was this oddball thing, but it turned out to be something really positive. So the kind of anomaly with that outside-of-city-limits pilot is that generally, the number of subscribers should equal the number of past products, because we're not actively dropping unless there is a customer who's going to subscribe. This case is interesting, because this is the new, and I know I'm going to pronounce this incorrectly, the agrarian, it's the new property that's on Ridge Road. It's called Thirty-Eight Corners, it is a Hatfield project.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, I know I'm butchering. It's a combination of something like agrarian and majestic, I think it's aggressedic. I do need to speak with him and get that correct, so I can pronounce that correctly. But they did go ahead and get the drop out to that property, but the home is currently for sale. If anyone's in the market, it's a gorgeous home and such a great addition to Westminster, but hopefully that will be eight in terms of number of subscribers once we have someone who moves into that home. So then what I've been up to in terms of marketing, luckily, we've been able to attend a lot of great events, and that's partially because the city always puts on so many fantastic events that I'm definitely used to attending just as a patron, but it's really fun to get to be there on the other side of things. So the first event that I did with Ting was the Westminster Pride Festival. I had a great turnout there, talked to a lot of happy customers and people that were not so happy because they can't be customers and really wanted to be. So I had a lot of those conversations as well, as well as the Fall Fest. We were the entertainment sponsor for Saturday Night's Concert. I'm also sponsored the Carol Business Challenge, as well as the Good Game Fest. I won't steal any thunder from Graham there, but it was a fantastic event for anybody who got to attend. And next year, I am hopeful that our team will place better in the business battle on Sunday. We came in third, which I'm still excited about, but as Graham knows, or pardon me, Mr. Dodge, I really wanted that trophy, because it was a... I hope you have a picture of it, because it's a really awesome trophy. And right now, it's engaged digital media, which, not for long. We also hosted a customer appreciation event at the downtown farmer's market on July 24th. We invited all of our customers to come down, chat, ask questions, and pick up a goodie bag, and as part of that goodie bag, we gave away a $10 voucher that they could use at any of the vendors in the market. So we had, yeah, it was really cool. So we had roughly about 60 customers who came and redeemed their vouchers, and then also about five who weren't customers but had heard around the block that we were giving away vouchers and came over, and I was happy to support the market. So we generated $650 of revenue for the vendors that day, so it was a really cool event. In terms of our larger campaigns, we had an Olympics campaign that ran between July 23rd and August 8th. And the whole feel of that campaign was, you can still watch the Olympics even if you cut the cord. There's many great streaming TV options. We have a great option through YouTube TV, so it was showing people that if you have really great internet access, that you can also have a great television viewing experience, particularly with the Olympics. We also had a back-to-school campaign, which we ran the month of August, supported that with direct mail, digital marketing, organic and paid social media. And then we also had as part of that a really cool giveaway. So one very lucky resident in Westminster got this awesome prize pack that had a laptop and then kind of all the peripherals you have with that all tucked into this Herschel backpack, so she was super excited to get that. And then lastly, we've been testing the idea of kind of a lower touch point when you think about marketing. Typically, what Ting has done is try and attract orders, which are great, that's what we want. We want people to subscribe, but we decided to try something where we would just ask people for a much more limited amount of information. So first name, last name, and email address. And if they gave us that information, then we would enter them into a contest, and the win was for a $200 gift certificate to Roxal. As you can imagine, this was hugely popular, and we actually had to shut off the contest after three days because the response was overwhelming. I knew it would be popular because Roxal is great. I had not anticipated it was going to be that crazy. So we're in the process of trying to nurture those leads, send them information about Ting, so that hopefully they do end up converting the customers. Any questions?
Any questions from Ms. Slinkman?
So, Mr. President, more of a comment than a question. It's great, you know, you're definitely starting to roll and get in the groove, I can see that. Nice, I'm excited, you got a couple of outside sales reps down here banging on doors. I think that shows a commitment on the company's part to the project, and let them know that we're pretty enthusiastic. Well, I think I'm speaking for everyone, that we're pretty enthusiastic about that, because obviously, your success is our success with this thing.
Oh, absolutely.
That's wonderful to see, and look, you know, I've been in sales a long time, and you just still can't be in-person opportunities like that, so I think that's really great.
Yeah, and it's tough, you know, being in sales, and especially in door-to-door, you have to be really resilient, because a lot of times, you're getting either people who hide and don't answer the door, or answer the door, and then you may not have the most positive conversation. But the two gentlemen that are on the street team, they're just so enthusiastic, and they're very knowledgeable, like they were telling me things I hadn't even thought of yet, and what they've been able to accomplish is very impressive. They even converted one of my neighbors, and I had already talked to him, and I thought I was going to get him, but he was still kind of on the fence, and they swept in there with a good deal and got him.
3% is good, and you know, let's keep marching in the right direction, it's good for all of us. Wonderful work.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. President, I just have a few comments too, sorry. Again, what Mr. Kavachi said, I love the door-to-door, I think that's great. And I found your story amusing about the person who moved out, and the other person moved behind and wanted it right away, and the person who was moving out wanted it.
Yeah.
Because I will tell you anecdotally, I do think that once you have it, you really don't want to lose it, because you get kind of spoiled. I know I've had that, when I've traveled and noticed the difference in the quality of my internet. I've noticed that, and I've seen it in the real estate market. Just somebody else I was dealing with where, you know, they're looking for specific houses based on the quality of the internet. And they didn't necessarily want to come as far north as Westminster, but they are looking at Westminster simply because of the internet quality. So that's a little interesting.
Absolutely, we have a test case right here, Mr. Dodge. One of the reasons he loved Westminster was the opportunity to have high-speed fiber internet.
So fantastic job.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions or comments on this? All right, always, always great to hear positive news on the Westminster Fiber Network and on how Ting is doing, so thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, Mr. Graham Dodge is here to give us our quarterly update on Magic.
I have video, I have two videos I want to show you in my presentation. Neither of them are very long, but there may be some to jump through, to actually get them to play for us. Okay, great, thank you. All right, so this is, Magic is in our first quarter for fiscal year '22. So this is our first quarter progress report for this year. Our strategic position, for those of you who have never heard of Magic before, we are the Mid-Atlantic Gigabit Innovation Collaboratory. We're a 501(c)(3) based here in the city of Westminster, with major funding coming from the city of Westminster. We have this sort of strategic position in the community to really drive a technology-driven economic development plan that includes attracting students and workforce, entrepreneurs, investors, and funding, and industry volunteers and mentors, and that helps us output economic development, output workforce development, startup acceleration, and angel investments. Our vision for Westminster is to be Silicon Main Street, kind of like how Mountain View, California is part of Silicon Valley, which you may have all heard of. The phenomenon behind Silicon Valley has all the same ingredients that we have here in Westminster. So Silicon Main Street represents our technology-driven economic development plan for Westminster, meant to reverse the flow of commuters for net positive job growth and to increase city revenue, and to create a sandbox infrastructure for technology innovation to occur right here in Westminster. And it allows us to be more resilient during recessions and pandemics, and gets us exposure at the state level as well. I wanted to share with you real quick this... Is it okay if I minimize that?
Yeah.
This is, we look back at the audited financial statements for the city as far back as we could go to 2015, and we saw this inflection point that we thought was worth pointing out, because it was in this timeframe that Ting went live in terms of service in the first phase of their rollout plan, and it's when Magic was founded as the economic development driver for the city. And you can see, there seems to have been, I don't know what 2014, 2013 looked like, but there was a downward trend, at least as it relates to real estate revenues, and then they started to go back up after 2016. I thought that was worthwhile noting, and hopefully, it's evidence of a correlation between the efforts that we're providing. So the quarterly KPIs, again, it's our first quarter of the fiscal year '22. Number of sponsors participating in special events was 21 different sponsors, which is pretty large for us, that may even be a record number for us. Event sponsor revenue received was $8,195. Stakeholder revenue generated from people just direct donations, $1,925. Number of grant applications submitted was three. Number of grant applications awarded was two. That amounted to $30,000 in single-year awards. None of those were multi-year awards. Number of volunteers from venture capitalists, startups, and tech companies was 14. We had eight outreach meetings with Westminster-based CEOs. And this continues, next page, we had eight outreach meetings with non-Westminster-based CEOs. We had one job that we contribute to being facilitated within the city of Westminster, one outside of the city, and then we hosted or attended 10 different conferences and events in that quarter, nine of which we actively promoted our Westminster Fiber Network and Ting. And we had six news media articles published about Magic in our events.
Mr. Dodge, let me interrupt you just very quickly. Apparently, there's no audio on the stream that's going out to the public. They're only getting video, just so you know. Sorry about that, go ahead.
All right. Anything you need to do?
Hand of mine.
Check, check, one, two. Check, you're calling.
Oh, I got a text from somebody saying, "Hey, we can't hear anything."
Well, I'll keep going. So accomplishments this past quarter, again, national recognition in the news media. Our Good Game Fest is the first year of Good Game Fest. We had nine new sponsors engage with us of that 21 that I mentioned. We developed a partnership with the Baltimore Ravens for the first time, so that was very exciting. In fact, they invited us to showcase Magic at our Good Game Fest at Ravens' Walk back in early October, I'm sorry, September. And then we launched the Westminster Angel Network. So let me just play this video for you real quick, this is a recap of Good Game Fest. That was the Good Game recap. Obviously, we're emphasizing the values of sportsmanship and healthy gaming attitudes and that. But we also had, if you may have seen the clips there of the conference session, where we had industry professionals from all over Maryland, and some from Virginia that came up to that conference. The second gentleman that spoke, Doug Watley, he's the CEO of Breakaway Games. They're one of the larger game developers in Hunt Valley, Maryland. Let's see if I can get this to the end.
Seems like a lot's in Hunt Valley game-wise.
Yeah, there are a lot. In fact, we also had Greg Street, who's a McDaniel alumni, speak to us virtually from California. He developed World of Warcraft and League of Legends. League of Legends is just one of the top esports games right now. They had 80 million people watch one of the most recent big League of Legends games, and compared that to 20 million who watched the Super Bowl. So that's how much, that's how exponentially larger esports is. And we have the opportunity, because of gigabit fiber, to be a home, to be a mecca for esports here because of the low latency benefits of fiber. All right, so I just want to share a quick testimonial with you. This was an entrepreneur that we ran into through our One Million Cups program. So One Million Cups is a weekly meeting, every Wednesday mornings, 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. Recently, we've been meeting at Startup Portal on 140. And it's a program of the Kaufman Foundation, which is the largest philanthropic organization dedicated to entrepreneurship in the country. They're based in Kansas City, which is how I heard of them, because I used to live in Kansas City. The reason why I was looking for fiber, good fiber neighborhoods, is because they had Google Fiber in Kansas City, so I got spoiled by symmetric, true symmetric fiber internet that they had there. So this entrepreneur, Judith Walker, she was introduced to the One Million Cups program. She came out and spoke, and this is a follow-up with her, I think, two weeks later, after we had met with her initially, and then I took separately, I took a meeting with her as like a consultation. So I just want to share with you, I mean, that's just an example of what we're doing in the entrepreneurial community here in Westminster. And we would never have met Judith if it wasn't for the One Million Cups program that we brought here. All right, what's ahead for next quarter? So we're actually, so Magic has been approached by Mother's Seaton Academy, which is a private school in Baltimore that's funded by the Catholic Church. It's a tuition-free private school, I understand it, mostly catering to inner-city youth. And they approached us to lead their technology club, so we're actually being paid now, we're being contracted with them. So that's another real profitable initiative that we can maybe start to grow and see if there's other organizations from Mother's Seaton that want to bring Magic in to teach these technology clubs. That's October through June. We have our, we just had our most recent Capture the Flag, Capture the Flag 11. That was this past weekend. We had teams from Bosnia, teams from Estonia. We actually had a Mother's Seaton team, it was an all-girls middle-school team, all African-American female girl team, and they just, I think they got to 16th place, which is amazing for first-time middle-schoolers. So we're really excited about that particular group of girls, because they could go on to compete in Cyber Patriot, which is a national program. So we're really working on cultivating that as well. We're going to launch Good Game mini-tournaments, so that's going to be at Tables and Towers again. We're going to try to do those monthly. We actually already have, McDaniel is interested, they have a student group that's an esports club. They're interested in helping us fund the prize pool for that competition. Another interesting fact about Good Game Fest, we uncover a student who goes to Westminster High School. I'm not sure what year he's in, but he is a ranked national Rocket League... I'm not sure what year he's in, but he is a ranked national Rocket League player. And that may not mean anything to everybody here, but it's kind of, he's kind of a big deal. And we had no idea, you know, that he was here in our community and we kind of surfaced him through this program. And so we're really excited at the prospect of having a professional esports player in our community that could go on and actually make quite a living at this. And, you know, esports players these days are making three, $400,000 here. So I know we're all in the wrong career, right? So our next big event is Business Risks 2021 at Carroll Community College. We're partnering with Carroll Community College for that, for that event. It was entirely virtual last year. But this year will be in person with a virtual option. And we're going to have a VIP reception all Westminster Winery. So please help us or cross promote that event. It's really meant for small business owners, anyone in risk management. We have Ron Gula from, he's a Howard County based entrepreneur who started a company called Tenable. He's also very philanthropic, gives away millions of dollars a year for cybersecurity initiatives around the country. People from Colfax Corporation, data tribe in Columbia. So it'll be a good networking opportunity for any business people here in Carroll County. And then we're going to have our second investment dinner for the Westminster Angel Network at Paradiso. That'll be November 17th. Judith, who you heard from there in that testimonial from Nurse Link, she'll be one of the presenting companies at that dinner. And then more of our One Million Cups Westminster weekly meeting. I believe that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Any questions for Mr. Dodge? Any comments?
Just good job.
Thank you. It was always exciting stuff and, you know, I'm looking forward to the opportunity here in the near future to discuss magic projects in the context of our budget planning. Cause I think, you know, one of the things that we want to make sure Ravenwood do more easily in the future is be able to take advantage of opportunities to, you know, be able to support some of these initiatives that, you know, are very creative. But, you know, have them in the past and an easy place to fit them into, you know, what we're doing. So, you know, we need to have that conversation with you soon as we're preparing the budget to make sure that we're ready to take advantage of some of those opportunities. Very good. Well, thank you. It's great to have you again. Let's, if it's all right with my colleagues, I'd like to take an item out of order and pull up from unfinished business. We have, as I noted earlier, Mr. Culver, it's a representative from the county here this evening. And he's a busy man. We don't want to keep him any longer than we have to. Probably been, at the very least, let him get home to his family, but he's not going to go prosecute anybody else tonight.
Not tonight.
So let's go ahead and take that item up. A document of resolution number 21 dash zero five. And let's turn to Mr. Depot to tell us a little bit on where we are.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is the post-revolution 2105. This is amending the adopted water and sewer allocation policy and the accompanying master distribution chart. On October 11th, 2021, the resolution was introduced to the Maryland County Council. At this meeting, Maryland County Council expressed concerns with the state's attorney's office site plan. And whether the site plan itself can meet the zoning ordinance parking requirements and the movement of water from the commercial industrial use category. The Maryland County Council continued resolution 2105 to allow more time to deliberate concerns and requested staff to work with Carroll County to bring forth resolution 2105 in the future. Mr. John Bowers, the, with the county building construction chief submitted a letter dated October 22nd, 2021. Stating that Carroll County is currently evaluating the parking needs for the state's attorney's office with a goal of providing various options to meet the city of Westminster's parking regulations. Such information is expected to be provided only before November 19th, 2021. If, if the planning, if the Maryland County Council wishes to approve this tonight, staff is recommending that any approval is subject to two conditions. One, amend the water and sewer allocation policy to allow for the transfer of water for public projects only with the approval of the Economic and Community Development Committee. And the owner of the property transferring water. And two, amend the master distribution chart to reallocate 500 gallons per day in 2021, 627 gallons per day in 2022, 2023, and 2024. From the commercial industrial category to the public projects category for the city, for the state's attorney's office public project only. So in other words, any movement of water will be only allocated for this public use. And that completes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Depot. Any questions for Mr. Depot? Or would anybody from the county like to be heard before we discuss it any further?
Are we going to discuss it after we put it into a motion?
Well, we have a motion, we have a motion for one. No, we didn't. We didn't get a motion.
Mr. President, I'll go ahead and move for the adoption of resolution 21 dash oh five.
Thank you. We have a motion for Mr. Kavachi and a second from Mr. Huff. Right. Now let's go ahead.
Mr. President. So, you know, I know that I spoke a little bit at our last meeting relative to some of our concerns. I think there's been a good spirit of cooperation across the board when it comes to the county, state's attorney's office in terms of information and things that we were looking for. And I feel much better where we're at on this, Mr. President and colleagues. It is, you know, always unfortunate when you've got to move water away from things that, you know, are, are good economic development drivers. But in this particular case, obviously having a functioning state's attorney's office is pretty important to the community. I know it's important to our chief for sure. So, you know, I'm supportive of this and I think we need to go ahead and, and make this happen. And that's where I'm at with it, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Anyone else wish to hear?
I'll just make a comment or two quickly is I know there were some concerns regarding parking and certainly a valid concern. But, you know, this is just the beginning of the process with water allocation. Whenever plans are drawn up, they're going to be submitted to planning and zoning, the planning commission, the planning and zoning commission will have an opportunity to look at it. And I'm sure we'll be able to, you know, work through whatever technical issues we have to. This is really just the first step to ensure that there is water for this building. Because if we don't have a water allocation for the building, it's, you know, creates problems for them moving forward. So I think this is just a, you know, and I'm sure whatever issues that, that the city and state's attorney's office and the county need to work through, we'll be able to work through them in a collaborative manner. So I'm very comfortable moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Anyone else? I just note that we do have a letter from Mr. John Bowers in which he states we are confident that we, meaning the county, will be able to meet the parking requirements. And we'll share this information with city design review staff when the information is tail watch. Again, it should be in a few weeks. I understand from Mr. Depot's comments. I've had the opportunity to read the staff package and, you know, the comments there. So I'm comfortable as well. And so if there's no further discussion, ready for the vote on the resolution? All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If they say nay, yes, see them have the eyes have it and the resolution is adopted. Thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you for your time and attention. I appreciate you taking us out of order.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Culver. Take care. Night, everybody.
Thank you.
You'll have water in your building.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
See y'all later. Have a good night.
All right. We'll go back now to our regular order. We've conducted our presentations. Under public hearings this evening, one item on the consent calendar, the consent counter may have a motion, please to approve the consent calendar.
Make a motion to approve the consent.
There's been a motion by Ms. Gilbert, second, and second by Mr. Kavachi. All those in favor of the consent counter, please say aye.
Aye.
If they say nay, yes, see them have the eyes have it and the consent counter is approved. Report from the mayor, the mayor unfortunately is not feeling very well this evening, says she's not able to be with us. We'll move on down to a portion standing committee and we'll start with our liaison to the Arts Council, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. My report is simple. We continue to plan for the annual festival of wreaths. That brings a lot of folks into town. That's my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff, Mr. Huff, Economic and Community Development Committee.
I just wanted to let everybody know we will be having a meeting on Tuesday, November the 2nd at 3:30 p.m. at 45 West Main. They, we have a lot of miscellaneous topics. We have several businesses that are looking to potentially locate to Westminster and there's some technical issues we just need to clean up. Potentially with, you know, text amendments regarding zoning. And we're going to be looking at that. Obviously, we're not going to change our zoning code just to accommodate a business if it doesn't make sense globally. But sometimes what will happen is somebody will want to come into the city. And their particular use not, might not be allowed for some technical reason, and it really should be because it's appropriate use within that district. So those are the kind of issues that we're going to be looking at. And we have a few of those to address. We also are going to just take a little look at the plastic bag ordinance. Cause there's, you know, now that's been actually implemented for a while, we're having a few technical difficulties with, I would say some of the bigger box stores not necessarily being in compliance or misrepresenting things. So that's going to be a subject of conversation. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Finance Committee, our report that the Finance Committee met last week. We had a good in-depth discussion of where the city is with our upper funding and, you know, how we're managing those funds. We also discussed the budget amendment that will be on the agenda a little bit later this evening. Personal Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Kavachi.
Couple items, Mr. President. First off, the chief and Major Gibson both attended the Maryland Chief of Police Association's Professional Development Seminar. Last week it was a three day event and they have reported back that they picked up a lot of good information. I'm sure they probably gave some good information too, would be my guess, given that our chief enjoys quite a positive reputation around in the community. I'm sure when he speaks, people listen. But he felt like he felt real good about where we're at regarding policing and police strategies in particular after the meeting and did learn some things as well. Also, I know we spoke about this, the chief took a really important lead role regarding some funding that was acquired by the county. It was through the health department, right, chief? Is that where that kind of worked that you're, you're leading that? And that they're starting to, you know, they got that award and they've got some meetings in terms of how they're going to use that money and implement some steps, some things relative to it. And the chief may speak a little bit more about that at some point in time. And, you know, patrol detectives, they're continuing to work hard and close cases. You know, you hear about in a lot of communities where you've got a lack of responsiveness from the police department when it comes to, you know, paying attention to small things like theft and shoplifting and, and things like that. But, you know, I, I, I think I've always been under the belief that when you don't pay attention to things like that, they grow into bigger problems. And I'm betting most of you agree with me. And the, the patrol units and the detectives are doing a really good job of staying on top of those things and closing cases. Things like shoplifting and theft and things like that, 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 you know, we, they're still crimes and we're still, you know, treating them as such and, and making sure that they are dealt with accordingly. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. And you want to roll on into public works?
I do. Basically, a couple of, only, only a couple of things, although public works, it's only a couple of things, a bazillion things every day, all day that they deal with. But they did yeoman's work in getting set up for the Halloween parade. I understand it wasn't maybe quite as heavily as attended as others have been, but that doesn't change the amount of work and effort that goes into it on their depart, on their part to make that happen. So we're always appreciative of that. They did have a water main break yesterday afternoon at Bond and, Bond and Park. And they got it resolved. Those things are not easy and take a lot of manpower. And they do a wonderful job usually of getting them fixed relatively quickly. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Kavachi. Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're planning a Parks and Recreation Council Committee meeting coming soon. If you have any agenda items of interest, be sure to get that information to the city administrator so she can put them on the agenda. And I guess we'll look at the pool and we'll look at Wakefield Valley and some things like that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. And the Technology Committee, we're going to, we've got a meeting organized here. We've got some issues we need to discuss soon. You know, Mr. Davidson's back and ready to discuss some top topics. Time for council comments and discussions when council members have the opportunity to raise any issues that are not elsewhere on the agenda or in a committee report. And we'll start with Mr. Huff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a few comments. Number one, I just wanted to say this first time as a newly elected official that I attended the retreat, I thought it was fantastic, very beneficial. Thought it was great to kind of clarify roles and what our priorities are moving forward. So I really look forward to kind of implementing a lot of what we discussed there. I also attended a town hall, virtual town hall with Senator Ben Cardin this afternoon. Was sort of interesting. It was through MML and Mako. They were talking a little bit about climate change and some of the funding that might come about related to that. And something that we don't certainly have to discuss tonight. But I would be curious from a staff standpoint, just to kind of learn a little bit better, and this might be up your alley, Mr. Glass. Like the additional flooding and some of the issues that other cities have, I would hazard to guess that we're in a much better position than a place like Annapolis. But I'd be very curious to have a better understanding of how some of the, some of those issues might impact us in the future. And because I have a feeling, depending on what gets approved, there might be additional funding sources that we can find that, whether it's stormwater management related or otherwise. So I just would like to have a little bit of a better sense of that going forward at some point in time. In other MML news, the legislative priorities regarding the long-term restoration of the highway user revenue funds and the ability to enable the local municipalities to have their own police accountability boards were both voted on and approved at the general membership meeting at the MML Fall Conference on October 12th. So that's it that I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huff, Mr. Kavachi.
Well, Mr. President, first, I hope that the governor and legislators will listen to a little bit of that in terms of those votes. That's, that's important. Just, you know, council member Huff alluded to, we had our retreat last week. It was an all day event where the six of us and our city administrator spent the day kind of looking forward strategically over the next couple of years. I thought it was incredibly productive as well. I was particularly, I guess, pleased and enthusiastic about Ms. M. Hulse's input and role that she played in that meeting. She was frank about some things that she felt needed to change. And, and we agreed as a body to, to make some of those changes. And they're marginally uncomfortable in terms of some of the things we're changing, but I think it's going to be good. And I think it gives her hopefully the ability to do some of the things that I know she's going to be capable of doing, or hoping that she's going to do. You know, when we hired Ms. M. Hulse, I think we were all very excited. It's been eight weeks, nine weeks. How long?
Next tomorrow, seven.
Seven, geez. Okay, time flies. Sorry. That's all it's been. Well, you've done a lot in those seven weeks. And I, I think we are all still very pleased and probably will be for quite some time. And that meeting did nothing more than reassure us that we, we made a really good choice. And I'm very enthusiastic about where we're headed for the next couple of years, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Ms. Gilbert.
Um, well, Councilman Huff took care of my MML notes that I was going to have, so I'm not even going to go review that from the Fall Conference. The retreat, I will agree with everybody else, was extremely productive. And I welcome Ms. Impulse to our group. And I too am looking forward to the future years of progress for Westminster. So I am not going to elaborate any more than that. I have nothing else other than to pass it on to the next council.
Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Comprehensive planner Andrew Gray made an excellent presentation at the MML Conference. And I would look forward to his presentation being scheduled for the, for the council. His, his presentation, excellent presentation was on the effects of global warming on municipalities. And he just, he killed it. He, it was just a great presentation. So I would look forward to that being scheduled sometime soon. That'll be my, that'll be my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. I'll just add my own, you know, comments on the strategic planning retreat. We didn't really retreat anywhere. We just went down to the basement, the off stolen. And it was, it was a good site to be able to do it. The off-stoing. And it was, it was a good site to be able to do it. And, you know, we were yeah, I think we had, as others said, we had excellent conversations, some more frank discussions, I think, on the opportunity for to learn more about, you know, what are the council, mayor and council on their thinking, plus learn more about the city administrators thinking. And I think that we we reached, you know, a lot of agreement on, you know, where the city needs to go and how we all want to see the city managed over the next few years. And I'm looking forward to, you know, making all that happen. So it was a good day. And thanks again to Ms. M. Hulse and the rest of the staff who worked hard to help, you know, make that a productive event.
Thank you, sir.
Let's move on now to, let's see, we've we removed the one bid from the agenda. We'll bring that back in a future meeting. We will move on now to ordinances and resolutions. And first is introduction of ordinance number 940, Amending Fiscal Year 2022 Budget. And for that, we'll turn to Ms. Colston.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you're aware, the current fiscal year commenced on July 1st, 2021. In accordance with Article 2 of the Charter of the City of Westminster, the city administrator prepared a proposed budget on behalf of the mayor for the common council's consideration and the ordinance 935 was adopted on May 10th, 2021. During the current year, it has become apparent that the city has incurred or will incur expenses exceeding the current appropriations. And as a result, additional appropriations are deemed necessary. A summary of those additions was included in your packet. Just an overview of those, $658,797 will be funded with ARPA funds. $1,307,535 is funded from prior year appropriations. And $74,000, zero, $74,058 will be funded through reserves. At this time, staff recommends that the mayor and common council adopt the amended budget appropriations as detailed in ordinance number 940. I am available for any questions, should you have any.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Colston. Let's let's get a motion on the floor on this. We have a motion to introduce.
Motion to approve.
Well, it's to introduce, but introduce. But thank you. But I'll take that as a motion.
I'll second the introduction.
Motion to introduce by Mr. Dayhoff, the second by Ms. Gilbert. Thank you very much. And let me just say, we're not gonna, we don't have a lot of discussion tonight because it is just for introduction, but I do want to say that the mayor and the Finance Committee, you know, had a meeting where we discussed this extensively with staff, Ms. M. Hulse and Ms. Colston, and went into a lot of detail. And I think there's a lot of information in the staff package, which hopefully all of you had a chance to take a look at over the weekend. Ms. M. Hulse, I did have the opportunity to speak with all the council members who are not on the Finance Committee to, you know, acquaint everybody with some of the key items that were in there. We are happy and I know the staff is happy to continue to answer questions over the next couple of weeks as we prepare to bring this back for adoption in two weeks. If anybody has any questions or comments right now, I'd be happy to entertain them, but otherwise we'll look forward to bringing it back in two weeks. Ms. M. Hulse, did you want to say something?
I did. I just wanted to remind you and the council that this part of the items in here also went through the Public Safety Committee.
Yes, thank you very much. Any questions or comments at this time? All right, hearing none, we will, you know, hold this over for a discussion and adoption at the next meeting.
Do we have to vote to introduce it, Mr. President?
Yeah, we do. Yeah. All those in favor of introduction, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it. And you know, then we move on to the second for adoption of the next one. Next item is introduction of ordinance number 939, Amending Chapter 164 Zoning and Subdivision of the National City Code, Article 25, Site Plan Section 164-211. Dot H, Lapse of Approval, to add Section 164-211-H2 to allow for a one-year extension to an approval plan. Mr. Debo.
Thank you. Pursuant to zoning ordinance section 164-211-H, the site plan shall become null and void after one year from the date of approval unless a building permit has been issued and substantial work has begun on the project. Staff is requesting that the mayor and common council consider extending the one-year null and void time period for site plans approved during the COVID-19 pandemic time period due primarily to the lack of available workers and supply shortages. On October 6th, 2021, the cycling extension concept was introduced to the Economic Community Development Committee. The committee supported the concept and recommended that an extension must be requested and that such request may be processed administratively or by the Planning, Zoning Commission and shall be valid for a limited timeframe of six months to a year. The committee also recommended that due process be considered. The draft text amendment before you tonight proposes to add new section 164-211-H2, allowing the zoning administrator to grant a one-year site plan extension from the date an approved site plan would have otherwise lapsed and require the property owner or developer seeking the extension to submit a written request to the Director of Department of Plan and Development. Limit extensions to site plans approved during the period from January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2022. And finally, allow for one year, only one extension to be granted. Staff recommends that those ordinance 939 as introduced for consideration to the mayor and common council on October 25th, 2021 be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its review and recommendation to the mayor and common council. And that completes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Debo. Do you have a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll move, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. But a motion by Mr. Cavaci to introduce it. There are a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hoff. Any questions or comments on the ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Debo, I just want to clarify. I had asked a question or two. I just want to make sure I'm understanding. The intention here is that if I asked, asked for the one-year extension, you're you're automatically giving in that. Is that correct? Or is it to your discretion that you're going to give that?
I took with the less than the city attorney and we did talk about that. Initially, we were looking at possibly the ability denial, but we, after discussion, it is an automatic approval. It's more processing. So we knew have a new denial date or lapse date. So anybody that falls within that timeframe that requests an extension before it's null and void would be granted a one-year extension.
So the intention is if me as the applicant, as long as my plan has not already lapsed, I submit a request and you're basically automatically going to grant that request for a year. Okay, gotcha. And then, Mr. President, just to correct me if I'm wrong, we introduce this and then it goes to Planning Commission and then it comes back to us or what is the?
In this one, in this instance, that's correct, yes.
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay.
All amendments to the zoning ordinance go to Planning Commission first.
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
I'm sorry, you did ask me to speak up. I said all amendments to the zoning ordinance go to the Planning Commission by virtue of a separate provision in your zoning ordinance.
So once we introduce it, it'll go to Planning?
Yeah, I mean, it, the process would allow it to go to Planning Commission before it gets introduced, but then it has turned out to be most efficient to getting things adapted. If you introduce them, then they go.
So it'll go to Planning Commission and then it'll come back here. Okay. My my only comment is just reading through the language. I, my, we'll work through it and kind of maybe tighten it up a little bit because when I read what I read, I was kind of misunderstanding what the intent was. I just wanted to be really clear what the intent is. And then between now and going to Planning Commission and coming back here, I'm sure whatever we need to you know, address will get addressed. So but I'm definitely supportive of this. I think, again, it's our effort as a city to try to be as friendly, you know, as reasonable to the business community. And I think this is a great way to kind of help out the business community that's been, you know, hit with projects during COVID and they've been very slowed up. So I think it's great that we're doing this. So that's all my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff.
Mr. President. The only question I have is, these are only site plans that were approved during the COVID-19 pandemic. So does that, what are those dates? Just for clarification, I think more for the public. I'm just curious as to pending date.
Any any plan that's approved between January 1st, 2020 and December 31st, 2022. So even projects that are currently under review, if they obtain approval, they can always come in and ask for a request as long as they fall within that time period.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Anyone else? Mr. Debo, my recollection, when we, when the committee met and we had discussed this, and maybe I don't recall this correctly, but didn't we discuss that there would be basically one extension that could be requested that was kind of automatic? And then, didn't we discuss the option of an additional you know, extension beyond the one year that that would then have to be sort of based on merit that, you know, that, you know, there would have to be a a really good, you know, kind of, one's a give, one's a givi. And then the other one was going to be, well, you got to explain to us why you, why you weren't able to get moving and usual water allocation and get things done in the time period we had. But then we weren't going to allow that, you know, to to exist. And I thought that I can't recall if that was going to be something we left to to your discretion or that that was something that had to be come back to mayor and council. But I thought we discussed that additional time. Did you, do you recall that?
Now that you mentioned it, I'm sorry. Yes, I do. Now that you bring it up, I do. It was, we did discuss that concept. Unfortunately, I did not recall that time I wrote this and working with Alyssa. But absolutely, I think that's what we're looking at. It's certainly something we can, as we move forward, because this is an introduction. I think we can add that for further discussion in the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, yeah, perhaps the Planning and Zoning Commission could discuss that as, if if it has merit at the P and Z you know, level of, you know, there's a agreement there, perhaps we can put it back that way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, for remembering that. I did not.
I was paying attention.
I'm impressed. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this?
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
That would make me happy if we did it that way. Because what we're requiring is that we be a certain prognosticator as to the epidemic or the pandemic and the capital markets. So I think, I think that we should really make a provision for a second extension based upon merits. And I would, I feel pretty strongly about that.
Well, and I would just say that the reason we discussed that, you know, not to belabor this at this time, was that, you know, we are, we are very cognizant of the fact that you're tying up a water allocation that somebody isn't going to use in a timely fashion is not something we really want to do easily, right? I mean, yeah, because there's lots of, there's lots of demand and lots of interest. And so so, you know, we don't want to sort of have water sitting out there for too long a time being unused because that's that's revenue for the city of Westminster. That's economic activity that could be taking place in the city of Westminster a year earlier. And if, so somebody, I mean, in my thinking, you know, if we do that, somebody's going to have, you know, come back with a really good reason why they weren't able to act because, you know, wild water is, you know, short supply. And we want to make sure that it's being used in a timely fashion. So, you know, so it's a trade-off. And, you know, so, you know, we want to, I think, you know, there's value in allowing for that opportunity. At the same time, you know, we want to be aware that, you know, there's a good reason why we're cutting people off, you know, that you got to use it or lose it. So, you know, that's.
And, Mr. President, I just kind of want to just remind everybody to, you know, codes are meant to be living. So also, if we run into technical issues six months down the road or a year down the road, there's no reason that we can't amend it further. So.
I thought of that before I said anything. And then when Mr. Precker earlier said, but, Mr. President, one follow-up.
Certainly.
Ordering materials is really difficult these days.
Well, that's one of the.
I mean, I, I'm, I've got a number of construction permits out and I'm ordering windows that aren't going to come in for six, six months.
All right, yeah.
Yeah.
Better move. We'll take your water.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all. So we need to take a vote on the introduction. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it. And we will look forward to the report and the planning commission. Thank you. The next item is being held over until the mayor is again with us. We've already dealt with unfinished business. I'm aware of no other unfinished business before the council. So we will move on to new business. Change order number two for the city's contract with Keller Brothers for the Diffendall Lot Retaining Wall Project. To last.
Yes, sir. The, just for your pointing line, capital projects budget included funding for the repair of the retaining wall east side of the parking lot. The project consisted of installation of soldier piles and precast concrete panels to back up and take the existing of that, or the take place of the existing field, gravity wall. On January 2021, the Marion Com Council accepted the bid from Keller Brothers and authorized mayor's execution of that contract in a not-to-exceed amount of $272,000 and change for the Diffendall Lot Retaining Wall. And this not-to-exceed figure was predicated on the base bid of $248,000 and change plus additional cost of $24,000 and change for the potential increase of thin brick, a thin brick add alternate that was consequently made available when we decided to go with the mural decision instead of adding the thin brick. Unfortunately, the results of the Geotech report in that soldier piles had to be increased in size to accommodate the less than optimal soil quality encountered. And that necessitated change order number one to the city's contract. Associated cost was $20,835 and change. And its approval increased the value of the contract to $268,858.42. In addition, there was underground obstructions of at-depth subsurface concrete structures, which also increased the scope of work. The resolution was to move the pilings and center line of the west wall about 18 inches to avert that condition. Moving the center line resolved and changed order number two for additional layout, a modified return panel and the stone backfill in that annual space between the two walls. And it cost $14,870. As noted, our budget for the project was $272,183, which is about $11,000 short, including this change order number two. We expect the monies to cover this change order number two to be available from unspent funds in the current year. Priority one capital project. So at this point, staff would recommend that the common council approve change order number two to the city's contract with Keller Brothers and authorize its execution by the mayor. Please answer any questions if there would be any.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Glass. May I have a motion on approving the staff recommendation?
Motion to approve.
So there's a motion to prove staff, the staff recommendation is to approve change order number two. Make that clear. A motion by Mr. Dayhoff and a second by Mr. Cavaci. Is there any discussion or any questions from Mr. Glass? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of approving change order number two, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay, the ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it. And change order number two is approved. Thank you, Mr. Glass.
Thank you.
Ms. M. Hulse, we'll turn you now for departmental reports.
Thank you. I want to thank the mayor and council for your continued support, for your kind words tonight and for your hard work at the retreat. We are working hard to do, get these projects through that you've outlined are important to you. And we appreciate your continued support. I'm going to start tonight with our departmental reports, with our finance department. Ms. Colston has worked very hard to prepare the budget amendment that's before you tonight. And I really appreciate her hard work. In order to get to the place we're at, we had to go through many, 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 many iterations and work with staff to make sure that all the details were in order, accurate. And Ms. Colston did an amazing job on that. So I'm going to turn things over to you for your, our first departmental report.
Okay. I have nothing departmentally to report, but I did want to thank you, the council and mayor, for the support of staff and the continuity of operations as demonstrated by the introduction of this ordinance, number 940. I also would really like to thank the Finance Committee for their guidance and their support in the development of the of the ordinance. It was extremely helpful to have that input and thought process, you know, during the committee meeting. That would conclude my report.
Yeah, I'm going to pop all over the room tonight, if that's okay with you. We had a successful Halloween event yesterday and parade. So I'm going to move things over to Ms. Gruber for the Recreation and Parks report.
Yes, good evening. I too would like to just take a moment to extend my deepest gratitude on behalf of the Recreation and Parks Department for the introduction of the budget ordinance and to see some support in there for an additional. to see some support in there for an additional person. We turn out a lot of events and we operate with a very tight margin of staff to get those events out the door. And sometimes the calendar is very unforgiving, where we only have two weeks in between events. So it is just incredibly assuring to see that there is the potential for some additional support in the Recreation and Parks Department. In the eight years that I have worked here, our events have increased in size, size sophistication and complexity, and we've kept up. But it's, it's a little challenging at times, especially when we look to, you know, times in our history where we've had people go out for medical reasons, or we've had staff leave employment at the city, and we have gaps in our staffing levels, and it just becomes a little precarious. So this certainly, being contemplated helps me sleep at night and know that we can continue to put the best products out there for our community, because they certainly do deserve fantastic services through the Recreation and Parks Department. With that said, on Saturday, we really had a wonderful Halloween event. We saw over 3,000 people turn out in the three hour timeframe that that, our event was going on. We had trick or treating up and down Main Street from Route 27 to Longwell Avenue. We had crafts and games. Kids turned out in their costumes. And we concluded the day with a concert by our most favorite children's artist, Mr. John. He really gets the kids involved and up and moving with his songs. So it was really just a fantastic, heartwarming day in Westminster. And we're receiving a lot of positive feedback on Facebook right now, as we continue to post photographs and ask our attendees that they, too, can post photographs. I would encourage you to go on if you were unable to attend the event and look at some of the really fantastic photos from the day. My favorite was, we had a child dressed up as a traffic cone, and we convinced two of our streets department employees to go have their photograph taken with our traffic cone. So we had to share that out. It's really a very interesting and hilarious photograph. And I will give a shout out to the streets department for their support and their fast turnover. We had a really small window of time to get our street and our event cleared before the Halloween parade came down, well, the runners came through first. We had about eighty runners for the mile run, and then the parade followed. And I will also give a shout out to the police department, because we had a flawless start to our one mile race this time around. So everything just worked seamlessly, and we really had a very, very short window of time to make sure that it all happened like that. So I did promise also the council and Ms. Immels at the last meeting that I would have some Fall Fest numbers for you. And so I didn't, we still are piecing together the, the financial picture, and I'm hesitant to really give you sort of where we land, because we do like to keep that as sort of surprise for our charity partners. And so I just started to wrap my arms around some other really interesting numbers that come out of Fall Fest. So we are open to the public for that event for 26 operational hours. As you know, we engage the help of four charity partners. Those charity partners recruit 320 volunteers, and collectively, those volunteers worked 11,840 hours over the course of the four days. Doesn't even seem possible. I checked the math, it's real. We were able to encourage seven businesses to sponsor the event, bringing in $12,500 in revenue. We had 82 vendor spaces. Forty-six of those were artisan and craft people. Five of those were commercial. Sixteen were food spaces. Six were home-based businesses. Eight were nonprofit organizations, which helped with our kid zone. And then we did have one, by the way, premium space. Our vendors bring in approximately $20,000 to be there. On the grounds, which is in the park, that's where we have our scarecrow making tents, our dime pitch, the kid zone bingo, and a little pumpkin patch for kids. So just some numbers there. We made over 200 scarecrows over the course of four days. Our public pitched 17,719 dimes into our dime pitch. We had over 1,000 children enter the gates of our kid zone. We sold 3,920 bingo cards at 25 cents a piece. And our general public plucked 235 pumpkins from our pumpkin patch and definitely rated those. Now, the really interesting part, and certainly the meat of the event, is our amusements. And so our ticket sales were outstanding this year. We sold 27,602 tickets to our rides and amusements, and we sold 2,650 wristbands, totaling in revenue for the four days, $87,251. So we certainly had a very successful Fall Fest. Our numbers, by all accounts, are exceeding what we saw in 2019. Obviously, we don't have numbers from 2020. So we are hopeful that this will be a nice benefiting check to our charity partners, because they certainly did work hard, as you can see, and they deserve that. We, again, aim to have those final numbers and checks in their hands during the month of December. So that concludes my Fall Fest numbers report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Immels, I have two quick questions. You mentioned something early in your report. I, I didn't quite hear what you said. There was a number related to businesses. What, what was that that you said?
A home-based business?
I thought you said, were you talking about the downtown businesses, maybe, or something? That you had gotten a number from them?
So we engaged our downtown businesses in the Halloween event. Some of the storefronts were open for.
Did you give us a number relative to that?
I did.
A dollar figure?
I did.
Okay, then I misunderstood. We, we probably, you probably said home-based businesses, and that's probably what I misunderstood, thinking, yeah, I, I can't hear perfectly. And then number two, just very quickly. You know, you made a comment, you said that the, the size and complexity of the events over the past eight years have increased and become more challenging. You're selling yourself short. It's not just the size and the complexity, there's just more events. We've added a pretty significant number of them, I think, since you've come on board, partially because of you. And they're phenomenal events, and they're super important to downtown. So I, I think we're all enthusiastic to see the support for your department with this amendment.
Ms. Gruber, as being the new one here, just for clarity for my sake, and maybe for some of the viewing public. So the charity partners, is it the, you take all the revenue you collect and then minus what the cost is from our standpoint for the event, and then the, the quote profit from the event is distributed to the, the four charities? Is that, in theory, basically how that works?
That is correct.
Okay, that, that I understand. Okay, so we, we, we have the gross revenue number. We're still calculating what the actual cost was for the city as far as all of our support and hours and all of that.
That's correct. We got the last, we think, of our receipts today, and then I'll engage the finance department, obviously, in auditing those records to make sure we didn't miss anything, so that we're actually producing an accurate, you know, revenue figure and distributing dispersing funds.
And then you do a little report on just that? Is that how that works, or the Fall Fest?
We have a very large spreadsheet that puts that all in together.
Understood.
So, yes, yes.
Just curious. Just educating myself. Thank you.
Mr. President, may we have that report put in the minutes, please? Because I really, I'm a geek with all those numbers.
Ms. Gruber's report just made?
Yeah, I would love to see all those numbers in the minutes.
But there's a great format that that would work on. She, I'm sure, I don't know if she had notes or not, but give them to, who is our acting city clerk right now?
We don't have an acting city clerk right now. She can give those to the administrator, and I'll take care of that.
Yeah, that sounds like a plan.
That's great. I love all the numbers. Thank you. But you know I love all the numbers. Thank you, Ms. Immels.
I'm going to move on to the IT department. Just a quick reminder that we are switching over our email addresses to the following. So our email addresses at the beginning will stay the same, and then it will be at Westminsternd.gov. Is that correct? At Westminsternd.gov. That concludes the IT report. I'm going to move on now to the police department. Chief Lebov?
Yes, good evening, council. I also want to sincerely thank the council for consideration with the budget amendment, specifically the effects on the police department. I sincerely think it'll go a long way in helping us to continue to attract and retain the highest quality applicants, lateral police officers, et cetera. And I also think it'll, it'll go a long way as far as consistency and peace of mind within the department. So I'm very grateful. Thank you. As Councilman Kavachi mentioned earlier, the major and I went down to the annual Maryland Chiefs Association Professional Development Seminar. I thought it was very productive. Usually, I attend three or four sessions within that that I find of high value, and this year was no exception. We, we collectively delve through the legislative changes and everything that we're dealing with right now. We're currently working with Alyssa on a handful of Public Information Act requests regarding personnel records, things like that, that the law has changed on. And what is not quite as simple is that some records are releasable, some are not. There's notifications that need to be made, et cetera. So there was a lot of good discussion on that at the conference, as well as the other upcoming and current legislative changes. There was two keynote speakers that were extremely dynamic. One was a gentleman named Gordon Graham. He had 33 years as California Highway Patrol. He, he currently owns Lexipole, which is a, a big company that deals with risk management and police policy. And he talked a, a good bit about, about risk management, about leadership, about supervision, things like that. And I thought it was very thought provoking, things that, you know, you don't necessarily think of unless they're brought up to you. And I left his presentation with a, a good bit of ideas floating around, and got on their website, did some research, so I'm excited about implementing some of those. There was another gentleman who, he's a sheriff up in the state of New York in the northwestern corner, and, you know, he's experienced a lot of personal tragedy as well as organizational tragedy. And he talked a good bit about things like cumulative post-traumatic stress disorder, the importance of investment in, you know, employee wellness. We talked about, kind of married that into risk management, and, you know, talked about statistically how many suicides there are in this profession versus, you know, officers that get killed on a line of duty, and one's a lot higher than the other. So, you know, investing in, in, in that kind of thing is, is important. And there were a number of, you know, policing and personnel matter strategies. So I, I thought it was very, very good conference. We have a meeting tomorrow, our follow-up to the overdose response protocol action team. I, I couldn't be more pleased with the direction and the success that this group has had thus far. We've already acquired some investigative software for our detectives. We've got a lot of key stakeholders involved, which I think is crucial to making things move forward. And we've done some additional research into some other jurisdictions that are doing some really innovative things that, with the data, with the collaborations. So I'm looking forward to continuing that. I believe that's all I have. Does she have any questions?
Thank you, chief. We're going to move on now to the housing department, and Ms. Brown?
Thank you very much. As you all know, Mark Debo, Andrew Gray, and I had the opportunity to represent the, the city at the ribbon cutting for Westminster Way. Westminster Way is a 35 unit mid-rise apartment building that is mixed income. By mixed income, I mean that they're market rate units as well as affordable units in the, in the project. The apartment units have one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms, and, and it's really, really spacious. The, the quality of the work is very good. Spacious, you got a closet space, storage space, carpeting. The, there are several handicap units there. Some of the amenities are, there's a, there's a fitness center, a security camera, energy efficient appliances, controlled access, like you, you don't have a key to go in, there's like a, a little card or something that you use instead of a key for accessibility. There's security cameras in. The parking, there's plenty of parking, as well as parking under the garage. And what was, we found to be interesting, that they had two electric vehicle charging stations in the underground. They had also a smart card laundry room where the, the resident can go and put their little credit card in there and then wash their clothes. And it, it was just a, a fabulous setup. So it was, it was an honor and a pleasure to, to represent you there.
Thank you, sir.
One question, just, so it's a market rate as well as, as, so how does it work on the part that isn't market rate?
The way that is marked, the way it works for the, the affordable portion, it's when they put the financing together, there is low-income housing tax credit, which has a base that it has to reach. There's also some 811, which deals with handicap and, and accessibility kinds of things. So they set aside some number of units for that. All of this financing got mixed together, and because of the nature, the way in which it was financed, then they have a certain affordability period. For example.
So the building owner has to rent so many affordable units?
That is correct.
It's not a, a voucher, it's not a program, it's nothing like that? The, that's all on the building owner, it's himself to prove that he does rent so many affordable units?
That's correct. That's part of the front, that's part of it when they put the financing together, that became some part of, the commitment had to be made in order to be able to get the kind of financing that they got, in order to make the units affordable.
What is the percentage, just out of curiosity? You know?
The percentage? I don't know off the top of my head, but I can check when I get back.
I just, I'm just.
I'll send, I'll send you a note.
Yeah, I'm just curious from my educational standpoint.
I know it's tiered, I believe. It's not all one or the other. I believe there's.
There's a certain number, there's a certain number they have to put in a certain income there. So if you have some less than 30% of AMI, all the way up to 60% of the area median income. And the area median income is like $105,000 because you're in the Baltimore, 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 Tulsa, S M A. And so that may, that's why you see the $101,000.
And then some of them are pure, just pure market rate?
Yes, some of them are pure market rate.
Interesting. I'm just kind of curious, so I would like to. That would be great.
Thank you. Going to move on to Public Works. Glass?
Just a few things to report. The E and R project continues to move forward. It's activity in every area of the system. First, we're looking forward, I think the next milestone is the startup of the dematification filters, and that's going to happen in the next few months. Unfortunately, it's over the wintertime, that's not the best time to do that, but that's how it's fallen into the sequence. Also, to, to report on the Turwater Westminster project, we've moved now into the second phase of the pilot. You will recall that the, the first phase was utilizing a different manufacturer, in a head-to-head kind of competition for the microfiltration portions. We're done with the first manufacturing, it moved on to the second at this point. And then lastly, I, again, like everyone has, I'd like to. And then lastly, I, again, like everyone has, I'd like to thank the council for the introduction of the budget amendment. This is gonna provide specifically for the public works, the retention of experienced employees and, and the continuity of operations as well. This move is gonna pay you considerable returns for years to come, if it's adopted. I, there's no doubt in my mind about that. And also be remiss if I didn't thank Ms. Impulse as well for her hard work and, and listening as, as well. She has, in her seven weeks that she's been here, she's proved to me that she's the most effective administrator I've had the pleasure to work with. And that's, that's something to come from me, so.
Yes, it does, it does.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna move on to planning.
I was gonna mention that too, Eric, but no, it was a very good day, it was a beautiful day, and the facility is fantastic. I burned a lot walking through, with Eric, some of the elements of this type of, this type of design, handicap accessibility element. So it was, it was very impressive, the project. So again, it was a very nice day. With that, the border zone appeals, they do not have any items before them in November, so no meeting is scheduled. The district commission has two items tentatively scheduled for November 3rd. It's a tax credit application requirement discussion. So there's been a lot of discussions how we handle tax credit applications, which require for these applications. So that's gonna be brought up next meeting, as well as a facade improvement program application for 121 East Main Street. The planning commission has four items tentatively scheduled for November 11. The site development plan for Raising Cane's Chicken, this is being located where the Denny's is currently located today. The site development plan for Babbling, this is at Route 148, Course 10th Road, is a veterinary facility that's not in operation right now. The proposed resolution, 2105, that we are in tonight, and the water consumer amendment tri- annual update is also scheduled. Just a quick point, the position, the comprehensive plan, one slash two position, that has an emphasis on Main Street management and economic development. We have interviews scheduled for this week. Good. So fingers crossed, we will have somebody in-house soon. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Debo, one question, are we going to go back to live meetings on planning and zoning? Is that on the radar straight, just out of curiosity?
It's, I, I want to emphasize the ability for public to view the meetings. I think until we have those, the facilities in, in the, in the building, we're still...
That we can stream as well?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to the human resources department.
Yeah. Good evening, council. I'd like to thank you for introducing the budget. These funds will ensure continuity of operations and also help with retention of employees. Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Thank you. So a couple of things. You've seen a similar story along, amongst staff, and that is because we are a united front in thanking you for your support. The staff is united in their needs, there's been no sort of infighting when it comes to the budget needs from the staff. They bring forward what's important to them, and, and they have just been in support and agreement of that, and they're in united support of the council for that. We really appreciate that. Before I move off of the human resource department, I want to take this opportunity, while we have Ms. McCullough here, to highlight what she has done for us in my very short time here. She has been an absolute anchor for all of our staff. We've had a variety of personnel issues that we've had to address. Those usually come very quick and have to be moved on very quick. And Ms. McCullough's guidance and hard work has been invaluable to me and to the rest of the staff, and her intuition can be taken to the bank. So I, while we have you here in front of council, I know she's not here every, every meeting, but I just wanted to take the time to really thank you for all your hard work, and I'm, I look forward to working with you more in the future.
Thank you.
We only have the fire department report left.
Thank you, Ms. Impulse. For September 2021, we had 564 calls. Of these calls, EMS were 472, and fire was 92. 317 were within the city limits. Fifty percent of them were overlapping calls for, a total number of calls for the year of 4,877, and we are way ahead of last year. We are probably gonna hit 7, 8,000 calls a year by the time we're finished. Also want to take a, make note of the passing of one of the first certified EMS providers in the department, Dave Hashard. It's interesting, at the city of Westminster, we have a number of EMS providers and engineers that are airline pilots, they are nuclear engineers. Mr. Hashard was a nuclear engineer. He just happened to be an EMS provider at the city of Westminster and an engineer. He just passed away. Years and years and years of this thing with service for the community, and we mourn his loss, it's a great loss for the community. Thank you, Ms. Impulse.
That concludes the departmental reports, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Impulse, and all the department heads, and on behalf of the mayor and council, I'm gonna say thank you to Mr. Brown and Mr. Debo, and Mr. Gray, who was not with us for stepping in at our place and attending the dedication ceremonies at Westminster Way. We'd all been invited, and of course, it happened while we were in the midst of our strategic planning session, so we couldn't attend, but we appreciate very much you showing the flag for us, thank you very much. Final item on our agenda is citizen comments. When we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues pertaining to tonight's agenda or any other city issues, for citizens not attending the public meeting, we invite them to send us their comments or concerns via email and comment@westgov.com. All comments received by email will be shared with the mayor and council. Commentators should include their address and phone number with their comments. Is there anyone tonight here who wishes to be heard? Seeing no one, you know, we'll move on to the real final item, which is adjournment. That concludes our agenda and the meeting. Our next regular meeting will be held on Monday, November 8th. Without, without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.